Turning on, okay. Ava, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the essence of our Constitution, under whose principle the Constitution and Justice are all.
First item on the agenda is the adoption and modification of the agenda. Is there any modification of the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. So I have a motion. I have a motion, I have a second, do we have any discussion? If not, please vote. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of regular session minutes for August 20th, 2025, special meeting minutes for September 3rd, 2025, bills for payment for September 2025, M per MOU, Grow Your Own Teacher Program, 2526 Professional Development Plan, Broker of Record for Alliant Insurance Services, Spark Hire Agreement, Parents as Teacher Salary Schedule, District Sponsorships, Cross Country Out-of-State Travel Request, A Partnership with William Jewell College for the Cipher Program, and Personnel Report. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Karen? Sue?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? If not, please vote. Next on the agenda, 9.1 Comments from the audience. 9.2 Correspondence.
We do have one correspondence from Mrs. Mellon, just thanking the board for the arrangement they provided with the passing of her father. So she wanted to send out those things, she was unable to make it this evening, otherwise she would have done it in person, but was very appreciative of your thought.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up on the agenda, 9.3 Superintendent Update.
Yeah, we're gonna start the superintendent update with our celebration, so I'm gonna kick it over to Mindy Hedgehaw. I asked that the board go up in front, so we can recognize some staff and our students this evening.
Okay, first up, I'd like Addie Gelkey to come on up front. And if I have any band directors or FFA teachers, come on up to the front as well. We are proud of Addie, who auditioned and has been selected to perform with the National FFA Band at the 98th National FFA Convention, being held October 26th through November 1st in Indianapolis. Addie will represent the Smithville FFA Chapter, Smithville Warrior Pride Band, and Smithville High School, along with 100 other FFA members from across the nation, that will provide instrumental music, entertainment at the 98th National FFA Convention. Congratulations.
Okay. We wanna know, what do you play? Who'd you brought with you?
I'm in 10th grade. I brought my mom.
I play snare drum.
Snare drum. Awesome.
Alright.
Do you want to say anything? Do you want the mic?
What we'd like all three of you to do is, please walk through, we'd like to shake your hand, and if you guys wouldn't mind, come back and get a picture with you.
Okay, Johnny, you can stay up here. So, um, do you have any students or?
Please come on up as well.
I'll start reading, you can make your way to the front, it's good. ICEV is a career and technical education curriculum provider. They partner with high schools to empower the next generation of skilled workers. They are here to present the Smithville High School Agriculture Department with a banner. We are so proud of Mr. V-Brock and his students' work to have our program recognized.
So, industry-recognized credentials, that's a buzzword you're hearing. Kids leaving school with a tangible asset that they can take with them. Industry looks forward, our industry partners are looking forward, and so ICEV is a company that provides the platform, makes these relationships with the industry, and then provides us with a certificate that our students can earn. And I'm super excited, it's our second group of kids to get it. I was just sharing with the folks here, one of the young men that got it a year ago is 18 years old, he's a senior this year, and he's the head steel technician for Steel Power and Equipment at a local hardware store here in our community. And he was given that opportunity to go to Steel University because he had earned the certificate. They thought if he was willing to put in the time and the investment to earn the credential, they were willing to invest in him to be trained. So, to me, that's the success of this, is giving these kids something, they leave here, and they try to apply for a job someplace. It puts them above and beyond their competition. Plus, it gives them, again, a tangible skill, certification they get to take with them when they leave our school districts. I'm very thankful to, it's expensive, I'm thankful to our school district, I'm thankful to administrators, the folks that participate in our Green Gala and put some money aside to allow us to be able to purchase this platform, and to be able to purchase the certification test and make this investment in our children.
I just wanna say one thing, we just wanna thank Johnny for this. He's been, our first warmout in the state of Missouri was given to Johnny last year, so I wanna celebrate that. He's now getting the second one, we do have another district this year that's getting one as well. So, he's been instrumental in helping us expand our product into, and to help with the industry in the state of Missouri. So, we're very happy to partner with him, and he's been a great advocate on our behalf, so we just wanna thank him and thank you and your district.
Well, we're gonna give you guys a chance to introduce yourselves, and then anyone that came with you, and if there's anything you would wanna share about the program, you're welcome to as well.
I'm Anna Harrington, I'm in 11th grade, and I brought with me my sister, my mom, my grandma, and my baby cousin.
I'm Trinity Holland, I'm a senior, and fortunately, both my parents are at work, but Ms. Leary is recording for me.
We also have Kalen Ash in the back, and she's another great student, all these kids work hard, and I'm so excited to get the opportunity to work with them. These tests are not easy, they're tough, and really, just kudos, pat on the back to these young people for putting in the extra effort, cuz it is above and beyond what we're doing in our curriculum. So, congratulations, guys.
Okay, next up, if you are part of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, come on up front. This year marks the third year of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council here at Smithville for students in grades 7 through 12. Interest continues to grow with more than 70 students applying, and 32 being selected this year to serve on the council. These student leaders are actively involved in a variety of activities, and serve as strong advocates for their schools. One of the most valuable aspects of the council is the monthly collaboration between the middle and high school students. They take the conversations back to their principals, providing feedback that helps strengthen communication and drive positive change. Last year, their input directly led to several improvements across the district, showing the real impact of student voice.
I'm Mason Foster, and I'm in 11th grade. My family was not able to attend today.
My name is Colin Dew, I'm in 9th grade, and I brought my dad with me.
My name is Emma Ullidaw, I'm a senior this year, and my family was not able to attend.
I'm Ava Nichol, I'm in 8th grade, and I brought my mom with me.
I'm Josie Siler, I'm in 8th grade, and I brought my mom with me.
I'm Charlie Taylor, I'm in 8th grade, and I brought my dad with me.
I'm Emily Breeze, I'm in 9th grade, and my family was not able to attend.
I'm Judd Malter, I'm a junior, and I just came from swim practice, so I didn't really bring anybody with me.
I'm Audrey Jacobs, I'm in 7th grade, and I brought my mom with me.
I'm Emma Marshall, I'm in 10th grade, and I brought my dad with me.
I'm Nora Schinning, I'm in 9th grade, and I brought my mom, my brother, and my dad with me.
Well, congratulations to you guys, we're gonna ask you to follow Nora, and shake everyone's hand, then we're gonna get a picture.
I can see everybody now, ready? One, two, three, let me take a few. Perfect, thank you.
Usually, I talk about the Superintendent's Advisory Council every month. As Mindy shared, we had over 70 applicants this year, which really talks to how well our students wanna bring their voice to what we do. And while I usually talk about this after everyone leaves, I imagine most of you aren't staying for the rest of the meeting, so I thought I'd take advantage of captive audience. But I want you to understand what impacts they make that really impact our decisions. So, one of the things we heard from our middle school over the last two years was that the restrooms, if you're over about 5'8" or 5'10", and you stand up, you can see your neighbors. That's fairly uncomfortable, that's the reason it was on the bond. We're doing that, the locker rooms, which are largely original to 1992 when the middle school opened, are just in need of some refresh. They want cubbies and hooks, our young ladies would like more than one outlet that they can use to get ready for Picture Day, any of those different things, as well as a mirror to perhaps look themselves in, amazingly, that did not come on the boys' side request. Did come from our young ladies, so we're trying to be really responsive and let them know that what they ask and engage with us is how we're gonna respond. There are times, and I shared with them during our first meeting, that our board will ask questions like, what are students saying? So, we'll bring that back to that meeting and then take that information back to our board. Examples at the high school, there was zero chance that we were gonna touch the high school without adding more restrooms. Zero, without adding more restrooms and without renovating some of our restrooms as well. It's all coming from our students. When we talked about the learning spaces, they were the first ones to see conceptual designs, give feedback. Last year, PJ worked with the group to really look at what furniture we would potentially want in future classrooms. And so, in four of our classrooms, two at the middle school, two at the high school, we have some initial furniture based on our student feedback of how to structure what those classroom assets can look like, and how they can make high-low, move those pieces around. So, their feedback is really important to us. A couple of years ago, we had some things on the parade we wanted to do differently, they're the ones that we went to to ask on how to engage. So, just super impressed with how many people we have interested. We had the meeting in this room, 32 is about our max. Otherwise, I would have loved to bring in all 70, but they're just truly, truly invaluable of the feedback that they give us and what we're able to make decisions on, saying, the reason we're here is cuz our students. And here's what they're telling us that they need. So, just thank you guys for being a part of it.
And I agree, I get to be at those meetings, and it's the highlight of my month, so, they are great kids. Um, okay, so next up, if you are a high school staff member, come on up to the front. Or principal. Or staff members, or principals. It's up to you. Okay, high school students, you did not know this was happening, but if you're in high school, come up to the front. Okay, here is the big announcement, Smithville High School has been named 2025 Best High School, made the US News &amp; World Report list of Best High Schools. So, their rankings include data on nearly 25,000 public schools in 50 states and the District of Columbia. The highest-ranked US public schools are those whose students demonstrated outstanding outcomes above expectations in math, reading, and science state assessments, earned qualifying scores on an array of college-level exams, and graduated in high proportions. So, congratulations.
Hey, guys, uh, first off, I'm Scott Moore, I'm the principal of the high school, and I'd love to continue to brag about having the best job in the world, because regardless of the obstacles and challenges, these people up here, adults and students alike, are the reason why I love what I do. But I will tell you, there's a lot of things that go into the data that make our school so great. One of them is always not shown on a data report, which is, these two young ladies right here, come right by my side, if you guys don't know, I hold on to these guys, and they help me. That's not something that you see in data, but what you do see in data is our students are in the top 10% in state test scores, attendance, GPA. Our students continue their education as well as employment, and go into the Army, military, whatever branch that may be. Like, majority of our kids, 70, 80% of our kids, all have a plan before they leave our building. And then, we are always available for them even after they graduate. And so, collectively with the adults up here, we tell our kids at graduation, just cuz you graduated, doesn't mean we're not still here. So, I can assure you, our students work extremely hard, our staff works extremely hard, and administrators, we just get to pour into that, and the more that we're able to do that, and the better, we're able to continue to move forward as a building. So, I feel extremely privileged to be the principal there, but it is definitely because of the adults and the students that you see up here. We couldn't do what we do without them, so, thank you. Yeah, I can introduce the staff, you have Mr. Logan back here, he teaches math for us. You have Mr. Lackey, he is one of our assistant principals, you have Ms. Leary, who is one of our assistant principals. You have Mr. Maylow, who teaches band for us, percussion, and then you have Mr. V-Brock, who is AG, and then you have Mr. Corcoran, who is our Activities Director slash Administrator.
Ava? Her last name? I can answer. Siler?
Cash, you can't leave, you have to stay.
No. Cash and dear, you're staying.
You're still talking, Mark?
Couple items, should be. Just a couple of more items I wanted to share about is, thank you for your flexibility on the property tax rate hearing. As Karen and I were discussing, we just felt it would be better to have the best information possible to move forward with, so wanted that post BoE information, so I appreciate you guys moving that to next week. Last Friday, or two Fridays ago, we hosted the Community Tailgate. Southern Bank sponsored the food, which was a hot dog, chips, and a cookie, as well as a drink. And then, TW provided t-shirts, which we began, although officially started at 5:30, we began handing out t-shirts about 4:45. And we ran out of t-shirts, 700-plus t-shirts that we handed out, as many or more hot dogs, cuz I'm sure we had some young, hungry men that went through more than once. And it was just a great experience, it is, I just continue to be amazed at, when you wanna engage with the community, how much they show up. And this is one small way that we're able to show our appreciation for all of their support. So, a great way to interact, it was a board goal several years ago for us to have more of these events, and I think this continues to be a celebration. I wanna thank TW and Southern Bank for that sponsorship. I mean, and as you guys will see early, or later in the fundraiser, or you guys already approved the district sponsorship pieces, we just have a lot of the community, whether it's with district sponsorship, the tailgate, any of the others that support us, and just so thankful for the community we live and work in. The other thing we had this afternoon, we all did not manage to wear the same t-shirt by accident. We got to celebrate the groundbreaking this afternoon in front of the high school for all of our bond projects. We had a really good turnout, I am thankful that New Kirk Novak did bring some dirt that we could actually dig into. So, I am confident that the drought of the last 60 days would not have made it very easy, but it had a great turnout, I was really happy that we had students from every school there, because we hit our elementary schools with the turf projects that have been completed, our middle school with renovations that'll start next spring to summer, as well as our baseball and softball fields, as well as Megan there to represent the high school. Then, the teachers and someone, at least one student from all the different groups, to be able to come and do that formally with the digging. And then, the softball team, I think, finally got to talk themselves into coming in and taking some pictures, and I even saw a full family get out there and take a picture. I will share that we did as well, at the end, we got our own pictures, so, a great event, I was really appreciative of everyone that's showing up. Insight came and spoke, Mammoth came and spoke, New Kirk, and the local connections and things that we have, just another great event. That is all I have at this time, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions? If not, next up is Old Business, 10.1 General Financial Review.
Karen and I continue to meet weekly to review our finances. The tax rate hearing is when we'll really be able to set the budget after next week, we'll bring that budget revision to you in October. But as far as this month's financial review, it is as expected.
Okay, next up, 10.2 Boards Subments, Patrick Nichols.
Yeah, so unlike everybody else's assumption, I will keep this short. But, uh, we discussed our tax rate hearing, which we rescheduled from tonight to later on, just to get some better information. Uh, the main topics to cover there are our personal property taxes, obviously, that's a big topic for us to discuss, has been on the decline. So, definitely some impacts there that we're seeing. We discussed the SB 190, which is the Senior Tax Credit. We have some pretty good information from Clay County, Platte's still uncertain of that impact, but looking at, uh, Governor, there's, uh, Dr. Moss shared with us, there's 1,102 parcels affected by it, and the potential impact of roughly $75,000, not in our favor, but that's what that bill was passed for. Uh, we have the Board Policy Update tonight to talk about as far as our reserve ratios go. And, uh, we covered our preliminary ASPR report, which Karen got, so I'll be sharing that. Reserve ratio was kind of the main topic we discussed there, and it is above what we anticipated, so that's always a good thing to look at. And then, we had some conversations around some developments happening in town, and the potential tax impacts of those, so, that was it.
Okay, great. Now, there's a info only, so next up is 10.3 Mammoth Contract Adjustment.
Yeah, we are excited, Dr. Collins has been working very closely with Mammoth, and has been doing the final walkthroughs. They actually did the Maple walkthrough last Thursday, and we received the completion certificate. As we made some adjustments on different things, even did some repairs at the Horizon Turf, after that project is completed, has come in on time, so actually, two days early. We were scheduled to turn everything over on the 12th, that got turned over on the 10th, with the final walkthrough on the 11th, so we were happy that that occurred. And then, it also came in under budget, while we thought that budget was, I think, $620,300. We came in slightly under that, just over $6,000, or, we had saved about $8,000. Or we had saved about $1,800, which is a great way to be in these because we had some change orders on each project. Just minor ones as, as we looked at the landscape and determined what to do. Uh, it was a good process, appreciate, appreciate Insights work on the front end for them to be able to bid that as, uh, design build at the end. But that work that Insight did on the front end was what they bid on to come to us and appreciate Mammoth's work. Uh, we obviously did not have any rain interruptions because we haven't had rain in this area in 60, 60, 80 days. Uh, but do appreciate all the work that they did. So this is a change order simply for the reduction in price.
Great. We have a motion to approve the mammoth contract adjustment as presented.
So moved.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any, any other discussion? If not, please vote. Next up, 10.4, 2025 bond project updating info.
Justin, do you want to introduce Insight and then New Kirk for us?
I do, I do. Um, we're excited to have Insight Design and New Kirk Novak with us here tonight. They're going to provide some updates on the design and construction of the bond projects. As the precursor rerouting is underway and it will take approximately five weeks. Demolition and preparation of the building for installation and the steel footings will be the next phase. And then we'll be asking the board to host another special meeting in October to approve the bids for the following package. The final package will be put out in October with the approval request in early November. And I believe we drew straws earlier and, uh, Mr. St. Louis is going to take the mic first.
Yeah, you're. He's got, Randy's got a mic for you. We'll get a mic from you or you can go to the podium if you prefer. Go to the podium. I think he's going to go to the podium, Randy. We were going to block it off from you too.
Obstacle course.
An update on, uh, construction activity. Um, so right now we're currently, uh, performing laboring work. Um, as a student, um, you may remember package zero, package 0.5, working out some of the, uh, early MEP rerouting. Um, that worked, we were in our second week of five. And, uh, next week we will start on some night work in some sensitive areas. Mainly, uh, to keep the building safe, um, with activity in some of those hallways. Um, in different areas at the gym, uh, some of the band and the music room. So, um, we will, uh, we'll have a day crew and a night crew just to make sure that we're getting everything ready and finished for demolition. Um, we are, for package one, we're currently out the bid. Um, we are accepting bids here at the end of the month. Um, early interest from, uh, trade partners is amazing. Um, getting lots of questions, lots of interest, um, really high counts. And, um, so we've got those drawings on the street right now. We'll have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow. I'm going to walk the school. And so we've got, uh, trade partners looking at, uh, structural steel, concrete, site utilities, earthwork, demolition, and then some temporary repairs. And so, um, yeah, lots of good stuff happening there. We, uh, we are projecting demolition to begin, um, towards the mid end of October, so right around the corner. Um, and all things are really going pretty good. So, uh, do we have any questions that I can answer tonight?
Um, I have some questions. So if, and I was just talking to, uh, some staff members tonight and they had concerns. Maybe they will come up, maybe they won't, but the, the people who are closest to the construction may experience like, um, loud noises or can like over time or something like, I don't know if you can prepare them for that or if it's going to be like consistent and then also, um, with temperature control in some areas as well. Wasn't that Susan, like with the nurse nursing area? So I just was concerned if, if those are things you guys were taking into consideration or if we had like a plan.
Yes, we, we are definitely taking more into consideration. Um, there will be some, some work that, uh, that will be especially loud and we, we have to, we, we can't just let that happen.
Right.
You know, during the day, um, we're gonna probably have to do some of that on a night or weekend if it's right up against the building. Um, if we're vibrating that, that pad a whole lot, um, we're gonna have to get creative and some comment on that. Um, as far as temporary walls go, um, around the nurses office, around the central commons there, there will need to be, um, some insulated temporary walls, uh, that are also water proof. Because we don't want water getting into the gym or into the classroom. Um, so we've, we've got, uh, techniques that are used, um, when we demolish a building partially, you know, um, we have to go back in and patch and, and waterproof those. So, um, yeah, there's, there will be, uh, a full-on presentation to, uh, Dr. Ma and Dr. Collins, showing our preparation work for that. Um, and then hopefully, uh, they can poke some holes in it and make it even better. And, uh, but yeah, the plan is to say, save and drive and, uh, to not disturb the kids.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Next up.
I was just gonna say also, even in the new current Novak, before that I came in touch with him, had been extremely offended. Even this morning, I talked to four of them, and we have a drill that I'm like, yeah, just get for this. I try and go around and hear these fights out, there's not a lot of people on a scooter, but I'm saying like. So I'm just shaking hands, as many of these guys, I haven't met one that hasn't been willing to at least, like, oh yeah, absolutely. Um, and so I appreciate that, I mean, for service, we had a whole construction guy like apologizing and being. So again, we've just had a lot of, lot of, right now, we have a lot of opportunity where those interactions have been just really good. Like I said, we did say it was a drill day, we didn't, we didn't, that's a good guy who put that in there. But they take it over to the project manager, the guy, and the people who have the class, which is, I really feel like they respond real well. Ask for something.
Keep asking, we'll hope to keep it fun.
I, uh, at the groundbreaking, you know, we've seen these renderings, we've talked over and over about all the details, but even my own boys, they saw the renderings, they go, is that what it's going to look like? Whoa, so those moments where it's like, okay, that's awesome, that they were like so stoked, so excited. So just seeing that excitement still, um, so thank you. We're, we're eager.
I also heard a couple of senior girls.
Yeah.
Commenting on how sad they were, jealous they weren't, that they were going to miss out on when it's all said and done. So.
Maybe they can get a break.
Yeah.
Yep.
If there's no more questions for Mr. St. Louis, I'll introduce the Insight Design Team. Yeah. Christine, Josh and Dwayne, I'm not sure who's talking.
Ash goes first, alright.
Well, this is gonna be a team of.
Okay.
I, I know a little, you know. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, let you know what we've been up to. We have some things we want to show you tonight. I've created some of these things. But I don't know if you can see, and so here's a good opportunity to update really the, the designers at the moment. Uh, we also have interior finishes here at the back of the ring. Uh, we'd love to have you come and take a look at if you have something you like that. The renderings just don't do the materials justice. Uh, that's why we wanted to bring some of those materials here, see if you can actually touch and feel them a little bit. And we're going to talk a little bit about those materials, Christine. So, um, we'll, we'll just go around to the presentations, that's right.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to share, just as you're talking, talk it because you know the presentation up there will just be slightly delayed.
So first one to go to middle school. So while we're going to middle school, the media center library is the main, uh, remodel space. We're going to invest some real, uh, improvements here. And that is shown in the paint in the center. We're enlarging that space by taking over a smaller room and enlarging that space. What we're also doing is heavy, uh, renovations in that space. That will be a whole new environment inside. At the, uh, three bathrooms, uh, Dr. Ma talked a little bit about them earlier. Having a market that's not full height and now private, we'll make them private, make them ADA accessible and full new finish in those three. Uh, and then locker rooms, we're going to, uh, take out lockers, open that space up, put a door in. We're going to install a ADA bathroom and shower in that space as well. Oh, sure. Yep, that's locker room right there. So and then where the showers were, uh, create more gym storage. This is all things that we heard that are really mean. So the floor will be updated in that space with the mirrors, the electric light, that's, and I think we're going to give it some things for the guys.
I've heard some, uh, design development for those drawings. Um, so we are working to, to schedule a meeting with those middle school staff. Uh, we had some initial meetings, but, um, we want to come back together to make sure that we're exactly what they need in those spaces. And we'll get kind of file from them as we move into certain classes.
And is that all staff that's welcome to come or do you?
Um, generally it's been a part of the principal, but yeah, whoever you guys need.
Coaches or?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yep. They, they spent probably about two hours after school one day, just digging in with Cash and team there at the end of the year. And then because this works really, locker rooms would be kind of that first stage in the spring. They have the opportunity to go re-engage during the school year with Todd. And if it's going to be anything like what they did with the high school staff, it'll be very, very, not only just, hey, we've met to check it off. We've met, we've rechecked, we want to make sure that we're, that Insights delivering exactly what they want, which they've done a great job.
So here you see a large floor plan of the, uh, library, um, that you see with the gold at the right corner of that, it's like classroom. We're taking out this, in the space, I mean, hybrid, that's either, uh, square space, way we envision, right, we don't see a part of this space. We like to divide libraries up into three spaces. Books, so it's teaching facility, you know, moving. Uh, that way they can have a multi-use in there, if students come in, we have a place to kind of chill out, read a little bit. They have that like a certain classroom, it will be the first thing they can do. So because we're, it's kind of loosely defined space. All of the, the bookcases in the middle there are movable. So those, all those bookcases, you know, when you push the sides, we can have a full staff meeting, we can have a professional, we can have a future, uh, where it's that flexible. It'll be a little bit, choose what, um, choose to do in this space. We also have a little media space at the very bottom. But that's a little, uh, meeting space that can be used in the corridor as well for the, for the media center library. So they can share that space as long as we're creating that space. And like I said, uh, I told Todd before we started, you guys see some things you haven't seen yet? Sorry, this is the first time we've used the people that's not there. Just now at this level, uh, that we're just not really engaged with it. On true news will change as we start to meet the staff and talk, and they're going to bring more interest to it. They'll look at progress, and we'll have a few. Christine's done a great job, really tried to bring in some prosody to it. You ever been in that library now, it's still a little chopped up. Uh, but by putting the ceiling in there and creating the, the utilities, all the materials together, it really started to pop.
And is that the graphic that's going to be in there too, or is it just part of like your ending? You could, okay.
So for getting the graphic, we just need to show how much work is.
Okay.
We have, um, and we do have a graphic writer, so we will say anything that, that we can get for that graphic. Um, and then put it together and that goes through our office, uh, like already earlier rather than later, but really they won't. That's a pile, um, so we have some time to fill that in.
It's not, we're, we're, we're estimating, like, right, this is first.
Right.
So you, Christine, you were talking to Christine.
Yeah, um, so you have the graphic, then next to it, it's where, actually space, those large wall, kind of, that way. Project though, yeah, that's what we, you know, draw on display on. Um, I like to do that, but it's right next to it, so that way it's kind of the focus. Um, and then there's also a, we need, on the wall, they need to have, they have reservations. And then you see from the backside of the desk right now, the desk is pushed against the wall. And, you know, it's nice to open and have circulation around the entire desk, there's just kind of one and three point. Uh, and allows the students to have. And then like Ash said earlier, there's a lot of mobile furniture in the middle of the space. So the book leaves aside the now, they could shift. Appropriate gear for something different. So it allows that.
How would you put it? The teacher.
And then looking back at the desk, is it another graphic right next to it? Again, place holder, we can come up with a different term, it's all there or maybe it's a graphic, but right now it's a place holder. I can be there to have something fun that you can be.
Yep. And then a little, you know, actually enlarging that a little bit, so it's actually easier to use or kind of to clean the garbage a little bit. So it gets sort of sweeter. Are there was another one space in that, in the middle school that we're addressing, there's the music room, carpet. Hmm, I believe we're, but maybe in our department to bring that, and do some.
Down below, some of the. A little bit, so we talked about making raised, uh, stuff in that competition before, because we think those are well done. So to take out that little bit of hole that's not going to hurt the pieces of the grounds, it'll just clean it up and take away.
For actually more than even over the years, that people think chairs, if we get some things. And moving to the baseball softball complex, we've all seen, uh, this, uh, on this, that we're out to bid. Mammoth has these drawings and there were minutes, if not, you know, we're not going to get through to the day. Any second now, we're going to get updated pricing on this. And, uh, there's some big ones here, hope that we've seen, uh, in the privacy. And when you first went with this process, we anticipated that we would hit. We have the, the GeoTech report that we had. And we anticipated that you have the full balls because. We had, uh, concerns about bill, the cut and fill, including dirt, and we're pretty much a balanced side. So most of the dirt will stay here, inside, be redistributed. Uh, the baseball field, the softball field now, the drop slip, that's where the baseball field is. Softball field is in this plane, is where baseball field is. Parking lot, concept, and that's basically. Baseball drop in elevation a little bit, that dirt will move over toward baseball, the plane moving, not softball, that's that side. We also feel really good about the drainage of that site. And then we have some, you know, things that we're looking at as alternatives in this package. To make sure we have good pricing. So here's the, the baseball field. We do have it, you know, there's stripes, upturn, brass, and we size those stripes to be the same size as the holes in Kirk. For a really good use of material and good fishing. It's a good place. The field has also been shaped really specifically for best play. We've had, uh, the coaches input on that and make sure foul territory, right, sidelines are really good. And we've got protective netting going from dugout to dugout behind, uh, the home plate. And plus we have netting over. And plus we have netting over the side here. Foul balls coming up the golden, just standing protecting the fans in those ponds. Also in fan zone, where the bleachers are, on both fields, they're raised about thirty inches. So that area is raised thirty inches. So you're looking down playfield a little bit. So right near that, there's a couple of things. One is I get a nice concrete wall as a backstop. You've been to a lot of baseball and you've seen that especially stretched out to the pincet and stretch back. Could just give you a house back for play. They're padded. Um, and if there's a really good sight, no addition separation thing is. And we're missing off on that, just a little bit of something typical. We'll look at the dugouts here.
Any. Any shading over bleachers? Uh, we had talked about that um because we thought the answer was no as of now. Can we look into that?
If you can look into it, it's good. I mean, a lot of that, there's different systems to do that. Some are built into the bleachers, some are separate. Uh, each each side has a uh bullpen. There's a bullpen for first base side and the third base side. And then we have a shared batter's box between the batter's uh batting cage between both builds. So they each have access to that between the two builds. You can see that. Now this is softball. Um, it was same same with the netting, same with the raised uh back stump. Next one, I'll look at the dugout. So what we've, the coaches really wanted a clubhouse. Uh, you know, they've dealt a lot of years and changed and parking lots and partners, trying to bear with the changes. They really wanted us to explore ideas, knowing maybe provide a place for players. Um, and we kind of came up with this concept, which is the one on the right. Basically, the home style dugout would be a span every ten feet wide and back. And that space would be used for an clubhouse. They have a door right off the dugout, imagine the clubhouse space. What that clubhouse space would be, that just lends quick change, places brought my personal belongings, get clutter out of the dugout. But also give them a little meeting space before games or after games. So the coaches can pick them up at second base and talk to them. About that for after game, they can go in there and they can choose a whiteboard or talk about little things that they wanted to do before the beginning. And so that's just a nice little space for them to to use. It has a room, both concepts have a room on one side. We call that the press box room. And it can be used for press, it can be used for score keepers, for uh score keepers, whatever. Each side has that, that that amenity. Each side also has a ten foot by ten foot storage space on in there for having pitch machines or whatever equipment they need there to um perform. The alternate with clubhouse gives them a span of storage, as you can see, it's storage that's quite a bit bigger, a bit bigger issue. So it's one of those, and this will get each, baseball would get one, softball would get. The other dugout, the wizard dugout would remain the same, would be the the base. Alright, so now we're gonna look at uh concessions. I mean, we have few concepts on this one as well, but they're a lot of high school and the problem is. The top one is the one for this looking body. The bottom is the base there, this this that. It's toilets for men and women, has a janitorial uh mechanical space, and it has a concession stand with a serving window one. That way the concession stand is separate from the features for bathrooms. So there's a little bit of separation there. Kind of privacy and just, you know, the use of the building. Um, and so we think it's a really efficient mode of designing. It gives space for two people to work that window and to serve. And then people also preparing back, if we're working teams, it can be worked, ran as one person. Depends on their need, what they would need. The the second one, the ultimate. We just put that building was spread apart. So we moved the concession stand out and we created a room in the middle that would be. In this model, it would be a shared conference. So baseball would use it during their season, softball would use it during the season. And now the dissemination of this space like this is they have to leave the baseball field or the softball field. It's not their media center. So we're gonna see here real quickly, which one comes in with its price and we'll wait.
No, I hadn't uh functional spaces like that for the players. And that's a great impact for the kids to be able to use that, you know, something that we definitely don't have now that, you know, we could probably get by without, but it's definitely gonna be functional space for, you know, uh really good value added. No more cost than it's gonna be at the best. Those types of things are gonna be have a huge impact for very little cost to the project. So.
And those would be, those clubhouse options would be in either the board. We're looking at just either the dugouts or the concessions.
Yeah.
So it you have a a couple of options. So the it's the regular clubhouse or the regular dugouts. Or the expanded dugout on the home side. Or the third option is the clubhouse in the middle of the concessions with the regular dugouts.
Yeah. No, yeah, or no.
I mean, oh, you can't do that.
Throw that one.
There's, you know, the, we we've also challenged me on it and they're really good about this is we'll look at, you know, hey, you see. Uh, we are betting the likes with three different vendors. We're we're being a little fun, you know, by sure we'll get a lot of good trades and the package. So hopefully that's a part of the policy. The parking lot drive down, uh middle school parking lot town to this space, um is curved. The side one, Jason, that's over in the sun, stereotyped. Part of this project in this, you know, we do need that new service for the. And I'm trying to keep this at party, I can just. And this will be the few many. All right, this is uh. Um, in front of the playfield, you can see the window in. Um, press box, there's one of them changing. So there was some concerns about, you know, where would they sit? And I said, where do they want, where do they want it? It's up there. We see a lot of people doing this for storage. We're in the second thing, you can see that front with the overhang, there's a little bit of an overhang of the second, check that unit. We don't, you know, trying to make it too big because if you make it too big, it's a shade with you, you know, a little cluttered. People who really do, it's hard to get the second. Right side and right side. Um, so we just wanna get from that protection. So you're. The next one is that we're gonna move to high school. So we have quite a few removes and mentions here we're gonna look at. This is the site behind this, the front of the building. It's very similar to what's there today. It's just gonna be into this movie and look at it. So everything, parking lot, the drive, all that just moves to the south a little bit as the building moves out south. It's the same configuration, one way, dugout parking, I'll make the dugout shown just yet. We had a new, I can endorse team in that new apartment, we have a new flag. A location right inside the front door in that. Uh, more protecting bars in front where the doors are moving, that will be the end as well. So we might run of the building at that pedestrian level. And the folks are also protecting. Corporate, I think you all missed all the renderings and personal fisher. Ground brightly. Uh, and this is very similar to what we've shown throughout the project. What we've started to do is getting. As we do have the um not mentioned, but it's still framed out. So we're locked in the basic shape of the building, but we can still tweak a little bit of the stuff in the inside. Now, once we get tall on the set, we have the big blue setting in that structure, volume is pretty much set. Uh, but I mean, you want me to go through the whole space or is that a, or you have a little link up and what the programs want? Cause it's a little hard to do on the scale. You've got the, you know, the center core really, it's those career uh program classes that. Space, support space all there. Um, I don't, one thing we've kind of been talking about on the back of that last rendering was that night shop. Uh, and we spent a lot of time on the, we really need to best still package out. So we spent most of our effort. And now that we've kind of got that out and we've kind of got it going, we're gonna start spending a lot more time on that. We're trying to get some time. I'll give you kind of. If those were, what we're looking at more in the meantime, is the ad shop. Um, it's a great shop. It's really got a lot of positives. It's just, it's a little cluttered. It's a little, just needed a little love to it. Uh, so we want to clean that up a little bit. We need some HVAC in that space. We're doing our temperature control. Uh, we're gonna put in, move it across the road on that space uh for noise, you know, taking uh moving into a new, they're giving me the. Uh, and we're gonna take the old engineering, the robotics button, open that space back up and make that into a workshop. So we'll move all the wood and some of the wood, get the tools out of the ad shop, create a space in that space and put in a new bit of wood. And we'll still use that space as well. So we're gonna do a new space where ISIS was. Uh, that classroom will be in woods classroom and the attic classroom. And now we're gonna get the renders of the main commons. Uh, this is looking, there's a walk in the. Christine.
And this, we worked with the committee, um, from the high school. Right in the bunch of different options and kind of went through buying opportunities and.
Okay. Um, am I on? Okay. So the biggest thing was to kind of be for overall colors right in the middle, not too tan, not too gray. So that way it's more timeless. Really bring in the school colors throughout this, the building. Um, really fairly neutral. It's just, we're doing it in some fun ways to make the school pop. We have carpet in some rooms. We have L V T or luxury vinyl tile in some rooms. We also have a textile composite floor. It's kind of a hybrid between a hard surface and a carpet. And just depending on what the space needs is what we've been doing. We also have a resinous floor, so similar to the back bedrooms. Um, right off the cafeteria, that flooring we have in like the back rooms and spaces that need a seamless floor. Um, wood tone, we started off a little lighter. We've come right kind of in the middle. And again, try not to go too yellow or too orange. It just, again, right in the middle. Um, and then playing up some tile as well. We were able to find a tile that has Smithville green. So we are, we are using that um and accenting with that tile. Again, all those samples are over here. So I'm kind of giving you an overview and I'm assuming we're gonna come over here and look at them in a little bit.
One other finish that Christine did mention that we're pursuing in the commons area is what we call a ground and polished slab. Uh, so at the beginning of construction, the contractors will lay down our structural slab. It'll be two inches recessed. And then towards the end of the project, uh we'll have a separate contractor come in and they will lay out what they call a topping slab. And we'll put some really special aggregates. So Christine's got a sample of the aggregates that we're looking at. Uh, the two, you come back with these finishes. Uh, but it really provides a nice party, um, very low maintenance, but really provides a a big bang for your buck in these kind of spaces. And so that'll be in the.
Sure. So the first rendering is coming in through the main entry and looking straight back towards the cafeteria. Um, right now there's a, it looks like a big door that's shut. That's actually just there for security and fire. It will be open. Sometimes renderings get a little finicky and that door wanted to close today. So it's closed. Um, but really trying to bring in pops of green, but not overdoing it. Um, so anywhere you see green in this one is pretty much a tile. So that way it's really easy to maintain and clean. Um, we also activated the side of the gym with a lot of display cases. This display cases right now also have a bench to them. So it provides another like seating area. And then again, pri- providing a little pop of green in those display cases marching down that wall. You can also see the grind or the coffee shop. It's right in the middle of that common space. Um, the one really fun thing about that space, it's the coffee shop, it's the concession stand, and it's the team store. So instead of having a dedicated team store, the discussion was to have just display cases of these are our new looks and then you can order it versus having the merchandise ready to go and handing out. So that that space has become a lot of fun um and very multifunctional.
Yeah, we also heard that a lot of their sales actually happened during events. Uh, so they would bring those items out on the rocks during those events and bring them out to sell them, but they would be on display for the day. So your your son or your daughter could say, Mom, there's a t-shirt all over Saturday itself. Uh, we're really closely wanting to make sure that we're not just being a, you know, a good coffee shop and a good concession stand. We're really trying to be good. Make a lot of consequences. And the teachers will really need to, you know, using that new space and shimmying that space. So we're very excited about that.
Christine mentioned that the media, the middle school renderings, that uh the graphics are still kind of pending. We've got some placeholders on there again for for prospecting purposes, that those will continue to work with the district to make sure that we're presenting the right information that you guys want in those spaces. Uh, another piece that we heard from staff and from Dr. Moss was the importance of the original um flooring in the middle of the commons area. Um, so we've been working with new, they're subcontractors to come up with a plan of how we can saw cut that out. Uh, trying to keep it in one piece, but steel reinforcing around it to keep the slab in one piece. And then at the far end of this rendering, um, there's a seating area with one of the, another one in the trophy case is behind. So right now our plan is to take that slab, lift it all the way up, lift it vertically and kind of mount it to the wall. And then we'll become kind of the backdrop that's framed uh with that trophy case. So still visible, um, but in a, in a spot where people can see it, but um, but also incorporated.
And very protected. Yeah. Um, we can go to the next rendering, but while we're looking at it, cause you're gonna see it again, the ceiling, it looks like wood, but it's actually an acoustical tile like this. So um the image on it is remarkable considering it's a acoustic tile like this, especially at the height that's gonna be at. But it allows us to get that um sound deadening. But it allows us to get that, um, sound deadening a little bit in there. Instead of letting, there's a lot of hard surfaces in that space and it's a big volume. So we didn't want it to bounce around too much. So. That is functional and there for aesthetics as well. This is looking back at the main entry. Again, you can see the little pops of, um, the green. We also thought bring the columns that are out front also continuing into the interior as well at that entry point. And then just the different angle of all the display cases. They're a little bit easier to see in this rendering.
Christine, is it still frame still?
Yeah, the steel frame is supposed to be black. Um, unfortunately that's in the structural model and they haven't quite updated that yet for us. But yeah, anywhere you see there's a big horizontal line going across on top of the display cases. And then there's some really white lines that go vertical. All those would be black. And then here's the coffee shop concession stand team store. So you can see that front image. And then the stairs, we had them wider at one point and then we pulled them in. So now you can walk completely around the stair and underneath it. And we also added a bench. So it's another spot to sit, like especially if you get. A coffee or whatever they choose to serve out of there. You can have a close space to sit. And then it relates back to the display cases as well. The next rendering should be looking down a corridor. Um, I noticed some signage, um, with portrait of a graduate. So we thought we could enhance that. This graphic is another placeholder. Uh, we took another logo that we saw, um, with another program and. Kind of did something similar with it. But again, placeholder, it can definitely change. But this is right outside of the, well, in between the office and the counseling wing. And we thought that would be a good location for that.
I have a lot of comments doing from students looking at the renderings.
Um, the other thing you'll see in this one and in the next one is there's kind of an X on the wall. So our idea was a nod to the logo. So if you look at the logo, there's an X. Um, and we kind of just did it abstractly. So that way we're just, that's where some of these angle ideas are coming from is from the logo. This is a different angle, same hallway, but looking more at the lab spaces. Um, this one has a nice view into what could be the biomed room. Um, but again, trying to create some excitement by bringing the color into the hallway and really activating those entry points. Using some signage, again, placeholder for the signage. You might see some other terms that I've already heard, like we should use this. Yes, absolutely. But right now we tried to go with the biggest word possible for estimating and we can always go down from there.
There's uh, some questions that people ask about the. Uh, every classroom. But we also have a place in everyone's classrooms for kids to retreat to that's hidden. Um, during the lockdown situation. So they have a place to leave that space into another space. But then there'll also be drapes that will drop down from the. So blocks that last for when somebody's walking down the hall.
One other piece in the hallway before we kind of talk. With recent construction trends, we, you know, previously even see company block down the hallways. That was really good, really durable, but in from a construction time point, it's, it really links and links them out. The big cost drivers of, um, construction. Uh, so what we're looking at, this project is metal stud walls for your hallways. Um, but we want to make sure that those are protected and durable as well. So Christine's got some different tile for different areas. So that tile right now is floor to ceiling in those areas. So that you really get a nice plate durable, uh, needs base.
Yeah. So anywhere you see white there is actually a tile. It's really hard to see in this rendering because it's. The grout lines are hard to see, but.
Sure.
Question.
Yes.
The glass, is that going to have the bulletproof film on it?
No, not at this time. The glass is not bulletproof, but that's why we take the effort to give a place for students and also. At the front door, the building, I think to prove that that glass will be hard. You know.
But we have laminated glass that even if that glass is broken, it really stays on the frame. It makes it really hard to.
On that subject matter, let's, uh, let's move on to the next subject matter on that. If you don't mind, if we can, if we have any other questions about that matter, we'll, we'll bring them up later. Thank you.
Media center. Um, this is looking at the front door. As you walk in the media center, looking across the room. It's a placeholder right now. Uh, it's really kind of, it's a bunch of letters that are just basically. Uh, but it's just a placeholder at this time. The, the windows are up higher. Really appears to be. So the glass will go all the way to the ground, go down to the top of the bookcases. So it's sitting a lot of light.
One quick thing with that graphic that was already discussed with the art teacher at the high school is what if we brought in green letters that said Smithville? So within all those black letters, all of a sudden you have these green letters kind of popping in and they spell out Smithville, but they're all just kind of woven in. So. Already discussing ways to modify graphics or come up with our own.
This is the classroom in that space. Then the library is similar to what we talked about. And this is looking down at that classroom. She really wanted something that was tucked around the corner a little bit, a little bit. Protected from kids in the classroom at the end of the room that wouldn't be disturbing the class. So we. Same thing. Want this is the, this is the existing hall.
Yeah, this next one will be the existing hallway and kind of bringing that same graphic concept between the two. So we're not. Old and new, we're one. Um, so that way that whole core looks like it, um, it's supposed to be there. And then this was the logo that I found, um, that I was kind of taking a nod to the portrait of the graduate logo. But again, activating a logo on this wall as well. So now you have one in each hallway.
Well, that's loaded. In addition to these hallways, we've got one more here shot. Um, that means the hallway in front of the, the van and local rooms. Um, we are also looking at cleaning up the finishes and trying to make it cohesive like Christine said. Down adjacent to the cafeteria, what is the current PLTW hallway and really all the way until it's kind of the, the ag tree. So really trying to make the core of the building, um, that was part of the original building all the way. You see, that has been added on all the way to the kind of new classroom that have been added and updated. As they've come online, really trying to bring all the spaces up.
Yeah, this hallway, just to kind of give you some reference, all those little squares are intended to be like where. The students have gone to school or where they have moved on to after they're done with high school. So those could be the logos. I know they had the banners. So this could be a different way to do it. That is easy to add on to. Uh, but it activates that hallway. It's a long wall in there, um, and it'll be very visible from Commons as well. So we thought that would be a nice link between the Performing Arts Center and the new Commons.
What you see here is the exterior of the body. Several people coming in. So we've really got a lot of weight in this. And directly back into the front door as you walk up. Best quality of warmth and the sign is right at the front of the building. Front door is still on, so it's anymore. Looking back at that. And that's it.
So you got rid of the green on. The two sides, the main and the media center.
Yeah, all the green we have in the exterior, we push that. Um, one thing we are looking at on the exterior, the current building has kind of a little band of brick. Which is a little bit different here, but you know, potentially going, um, we on previous projects used this stain that will be a long-term fix. That can allow us to kind of, um, create a piece of design from, uh, the original building entirety.
Have a big list, but I'll talk after probably. Too many details. She's exciting.
Great. Thank you guys very much.
Anything else you want to add? No, I'm good. Yeah, I just want to thank you guys both for coming this evening. We have a lot of conversations. We have a standing meeting every Monday at three o'clock. I would love to tell you, it always wraps up by four, but most of the time it doesn't and really appreciate you guys walking us through this project. This is a, you know, we haven't added on to that nineteen sixty nine. We started talking about that original building. So appreciate all the educating you've done to us. And I hope you don't mind all the questions that we throw your way either, but they've been great partners. You can see that the results. Most, there was a lot of design work that could be done conceptually. I feel like more before school let out, but. Thanks again to the staff that came in and thanks for insight, being willing to come in and have the conversations and New Kirk working with us on as an aggressive timeline as we can. For those spaces to be back open for our staff and for our students. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you guys. All right. If there's no other questions. Next up, ten point five. I have a motion to accept MSBA twenty twenty five B policy updates for the third of three readings.
Summon.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. We have any discussion? If not, please vote. Next up on the agenda, ten point six. I have a motion to approve MSBA twenty twenty five C policy updates for the second of three readings.
Summon.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Do I have any discussion? If not, please vote. Next up on the agenda, new business, eleven point one. Do I have a motion to approve MSBA board policy DIAA update?
Summon.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
No, I'd uh, like to make it for one reading. Prove with one reading. It's something we've been working on the finance committee to make sure that our policy is in line with our practice and, uh. We're going to accomplish that with MSB as help. So I think we can proceed with just one reading.
Great. I appreciate everybody's work on this. Karen, Patrick, Stacia. So, um, I think it's been discussed enough. I'm, I'm good with one of one reading too. So. Any other discussion? If not, please vote. And next up, twelve point one. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Summon.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? If not, please vote. Great. Thank you guys. And there's a table full of stuff.
Yeah. Not just the cookies.
Appreciate it. She's not just the cookies.
Thank you. Say good night.
How many was?